Good evening, and welcome to this the February 26th meeting of the Livermore City Council. I now call the meeting to order. Let the roll call show that all members are present and accounted for with the exception of Councilmember Spodowsky, who is excused. I ask that you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one mission under oath, with the routine justice trial.
Thank you. Now to the city attorney regarding the closed session, was there reportable action taken?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to report the following. With regard to items three and four on your closed session agenda, the council directed staff to continue its opposition to the permit for cannabis dispensary in the unincorporated county area north of Livermore on the grounds that it introduces a commercial use that violates County Measure D, is inconsistent with the county's ordinances, including its cannabis ordinance, is inconsistent with the city's general plan, places unnecessary demands in the city's services, that's water, sewer, public safety, presents environmental impacts that have not yet been considered, and it's otherwise inconsistent with the city's and county's ordinances. Council further directed that in the event the county nevertheless approves the permit, that the city staff may pursue a lawsuit to challenge that permit in court. And that was, direction was given 4-0 by the city council. Councilmember Spodowsky absent.
Thank you very much. Proclamations and presentations. The proclamation declaring Girl Scout Week, we're going to postpone to another meeting. And onto the proclamation 2.02, that is American Red Cross Month, is March 2018. And is Greg Portillo here? Okay, thank you. I've got the proclamation proclaiming American Red Cross Month. And whereas the American Red Cross is a volunteer agency chartered and authorized by Congress to act in times of need and to provide compassionate assistance to people afflicted by personal, local, or natural disasters, and whereas since inception in 1898, the American Red Cross Bay Area chapter has touched many lives in the local community, Red Cross heroes in Livermore work tirelessly to help in times of disaster, give life-saving blood, provide support to members of the military and their families, teach safety preparedness classes, and donate their time, money, and services. Whereas in Alameda County, American Red Cross volunteers helped 669 families affected by 219 local fire disasters, they trained 15,900 people in first aid, CPR, AED, and water safety, and collected 29,587 blood donations. And Thomas Petty was 100 of those, so certainly a shout-out to Thomas and all the great work that he does in the community. Whereas the American Red Cross provides 24-hour support to military members, veterans, and their families, and connects family members separated by crisis, conflict, or migration. And whereas this month is dedicated to all who support the American Red Cross mission to prevent and alleviate human suffering in the face of emergencies, now therefore the city council of the city of Livermore proclaims March 2018 as American Red Cross Month, thanks to those residents who volunteer their time, give blood, and donate money to make a difference in the lives of others. Mr. Portillo.
He said everything I was going to say, so I'll be quick. So, good evening. My name is Gregory Portillo, and I serve on the government relations team of the Board of Directors of the American Red Cross Bay Area, and also serve on our Alameda County Leadership Council. I add, and this is mainly the few words that I want to say, that I am taking the lead on and following through on our elected official liaison initiative, which is designed to assist cities and other agencies with political communication before and during disasters. And I'm just beginning now to touch bases with Herbert Cole, who I believe is your emergency manager, about this. Since you've said everything already, I'll just quickly conclude on behalf of the Alameda County Leadership Council and the California Coastal Region, I and we thank you for this proclamation. Most of all, we'd also like to thank you and your city staff members and your city residents who have worked closely with the American Red Cross over the years to be a better-prepared city and a better-prepared community. Thank you kindly.
Thank you, Mr. Portillo. Okay, and now we have the proclamation, excuse me, the poet laureate annual update. We have Cynthia Patton, our poet laureate.
Mayor Marchand, city council members and staff, it's my pleasure to be here tonight to give you an update on my activities as Livermore's fourth poet laureate. I just handed over a detailed description of my activities. Really, it's a really fancy spreadsheet with a lot of dates, but you can look at it if you're interested. But my comments tonight will summarize the information contained in that report. My term began on June 26, 2017, so it's been exactly eight busy months since I took over from Kevin Gunn, my predecessor. And in that time, and I'm going to read you off my list, I've hosted nine open mics plus three additional poetry events. I held a reading last October at the Civic Center Library called Meet the New Poet Laureate, where I read a selection of poems from my chapbook along with some new work and answered questions about the poet laureate program and my goals for the following two years. I curated an hour of classic and contemporary cowboy poetry for a community event held at the Heritage Guild at Hagman Ranch last July. The event proved extremely popular, so I'll be doing it again with a few volunteer readers this coming June. After six months of negotiating with LARPD, I found a compromise that we all could live with, so that we can continue to offer the Ravenswood Poetry Series, which has been the marquee event of the poet laureate program for the last 12 years. The first event during my term was held on January 21st, and it was a Tri-Valley Poetry Showcase featuring seven local poets plus myself. Future events at Ravenswood will be held on the following Sundays, April 22nd, July 22nd, and October 28th, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. And I will be announcing the featured poets for the April event very soon. I've held 14 Poet of the Month contests, with three more slated for the spring, plus a public reading for the winning teens, as well as the honorable mentions, scheduled for Wednesday, May 30th. I received a mini-grant from the Livermore Commission for the Arts, so I could expand poetry in a test tube Livermore Second Annual Science Poetry Contest. And we now offer cash prizes in three divisions: youth, which is K through 8th grade, teen, which is high school students, as well as adult. The deadline for submissions is March 10th. The award ceremony will occur on Sunday, March 18th, 2:00 p.m. at the Civic Center Library. Let's see, I wrote the poem "A Place to Call Home" for my swearing-in last June, as well as a poem "Eulogy for the Old Library, 1966 to 2004," which I did not read at today's groundbreaking ceremony, but I'm going to read it at the end of my comments. And let's see, I also plan to send that to the independent, along with an invitation for the public to submit their poems, short prose in art, in memory of the former library. Let's see, over the next three months, I'll be writing, I'm writing a poem for the library in honor of National Library Week, as well as for a student bus shelter mural with a Summer of Love theme. The young gal, she said, "Oh, I thought it would be great for you, so that you could, like, relive your, you know, your Summer of Love experiences." And I was like, wow. Actually, that predates me by, you know, a decade or so. And she said, "Wow, really? Because you're older than my mom." Okay, this is the, you know, anyway, but it will still be fun to write a poem about a groovy van with flowers and stuff. Anyway, so I'm going to be writing poems about whatever else you guys throw at me. To celebrate National Poetry Month, as well as Autism Awareness Month, which both fall in April, I have an event scheduled for April 12th at the library, tentatively called Audacious Autism. And that's going to involve poetry about autism, as well as poetry written by individuals on the spectrum. So, I'm really excited about that event. I was selected to serve as the poetry judge at the Alameda County Fair this summer. And on June 23rd, which is Poetry Day, who knew, I'll be hosting a reading of the winning poets and teaching a free poetry workshop. And let's see, I've represented the city at literary events in San Jose, Pleasant Hill, Oakland, and San Francisco. And I believe that's it for now. As I said before, it's been a busy eight months, and I expect the rest of my term to be similarly hectic, but that's a good thing, because it means that I'm serving my purpose and promoting literary arts, not only in Livermore, but also throughout the greater Tri-Valley region. So, does anybody have any questions?
Questions? Of course, as they say with the Summer of Love, if you remember the events that occurred then, you probably weren't there.
That's actually a good point, so, because I've asked some of my friends, who are old enough to have been there, and they don't really remember. I mean, what they remember is pretty much what I, you know, what any of us could say happened then, so, anyway.
Well, some of us actually were old enough for that, so.
Yeah, so.
But we remember all of it, right?
Yes.
Yeah, my first trip to San Francisco was in '67.
All right.
Well, if I have trouble writing the poem, I'll come talk to you then.
Okay, and you have a poem for us?
I do, I have a poem. So, this was written, no, I'm not old enough for the Summer of Love, but I am old enough to remember the, the old library that was just torn down, so. And many people kept telling me that they were, you know, it's going to be sad to see it go, even though, when I did a little research, it was built in 1966, and we stopped using it in 2004, when we switched to the new library. So, we haven't used it in 14 years, but nonetheless, you know, people of my generation have memories of it, so, anyway.
Every child in Livermore played in the Peace Monument, the sculpt, Don Homan sculpture in front of it.
Yes.
Every kid in Livermore's played on that.
Yes, I can remember playing on that. So, anyway, this is called "Eulogy for the Old Library, 1966 to 2004, Demolition in 2018." As a child, I came to this spot every week to practice the religion of books. I prayed in paragraphs, worshiped in words, so many words. They echo in the halls of memory, spilling off pages, flooding floors, carving canyons in the still-blooming garden of my mind. Words polished my heart, changed its color, left deposits that provided raw material to construct cathedrals. The building seemed so large in 1968, packed with possibility, brimming with books. The room smelled fresh, a river after heavy rain, and I gulped it down, thirsted for more. Today, we say goodbye to this hall of stone and glass; in its place will rise another, a phoenix from the rubble. Commonwealth of community, temple of democracy, shrine to the enduring power of words. May this continue to be a place that inspires, a place of possibility, diversity, tolerance, ideas, and of course, words. So many wicked, wacky, wondrous words.
Well, thank you very much, and certainly a very fitting eulogy for a building that my family spent a great deal of time in. So, sort of a heads-up, spring of 2019, we will need another poem.
Yes.
As that phoenix rises from the rubble of that foundation, and so we'll look forward to that as well.
Yes, I have a long time to, you know, work on that, but yeah, they've already let me know that. But anyway, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, and now we have confirmation of the reappointment of Richard Finn as city historian. Is Mr. Finn here? Okay, very good. Do I have a motion to approve the reappointment?
I'll also move.
Seconded by, moved by the Vice Mayor, seconded by Councilmember Carling. Any discussion on the motion? Mr. Finn, did you decide to say a few words, or as our city historian?
It's interesting that we talked about the library. Just today, I gave a talk at Heritage Estates about the tours that we give 3rd grade students in Livermore. And we start at the old Carnegie Building, and we wander around all over downtown, talking about old buildings and, and what they were used for, and so on. And we point out where the original library was, on First Street. And most people are kind of surprised by that, the taqueria. And anyway, we eventually end up back then at the, at the library. So, very appropriate, I guess, for tonight.
Absolutely, and I used to work in a Carnegie library back in Hayward, so Carnegie libraries are near and dear to my heart.
Yeah, 3,000, I think, in the world.
Well, excellent, well, thank you very much. So, all in favor of renewing the, the reappointment? All in favor?
Aye.
Unites?
Thank you.
Great, thank you, Mr. Finn. Okay, we've got the 2.05, that is, the, tomorrow are the city service awards. We recognize the great service that many of our employees provide to the, to the city. We have milestone years of five, 10, 15, 25, and 30 years. We actually had one employee that was here for 41 years, Randy Werner, the all-time record. So, as I said, the service awards are tomorrow, and one of our honorees is our city manager, Mark Roberts. And Mark began working with the city, lived Livermore June 1, 1987, as a planner. And by the way, this was one of his first projects. And he said he wanted something that would, he was told to create something that would last you, three to five years, some kind of, you know, temporary. But he misunderstood that they meant 35 years. So, we've been here for over 30 years in this triple-wide trailer, so it's kind of fitting that we, today we had the groundbreaking for the new Emergency Operations Center and council chambers, just right over here by the, on the side of the old library. So, he was promoted to Assistant to the City Manager in 1997, and was instrumental in the development of the South Livermore Plan, which was a tremendous undertaking, and nationally recognized as, as a model. Then he was promoted to the Community Development Director in 2000, and he was the one that really started this whole downtown-specific plan and First Street effort, so it's, it's his fault. But it's, and we've been chugging it along ever since. And in 2012, he was once again promoted, this time to City Manager. So, he is, he's captain of the ship, and it's our job to give our vision to the city manager, and he translates that throughout the organization and actually gets things done. He's done a remarkable job. So, with that, the council would like to present a plaque in honor of 30 years of service to local government. Mark Roberts is recognized for outstanding dedication and commitment to the Livermore community, this date February 26th, 2018.
I just want to note that it's actually very impressive that this was a surprise, so, very nicely done. And it has been a wonderful experience these last 30 years, and we've got lots of fun stuff yet to do. So, thank you very much.
Well, thank you. And you're eagerly anticipating another 30, right? You laugh. Very good. Okay, with that, that concludes the presentations. We go on to Citizens Forum. These are items that are not on the agenda. The city council can either take action or deliberate on anything brought up during Citizens Forum. We ask that you keep your comments to three minutes or less. And with that, we'll go into it. First one I have is Greg Scott, Carl Wintey, John Stein. Mr. Scott.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Marchand, Livermore City Council, and City of Livermore staff. I'm Greg Scott. My first trip to San Francisco was with my parents in 1965, and I remember some rough zones to the city, but I don't remember 7,000 homeless there in 1965. So, I'm a little frustrated with the homeless issue, especially with weather, like we're having tonight, and how many are out there in this community, and how many have been out there in, weather in the night, in the twenties. But I do want to give thanks to the efforts to help the homeless, especially I want to give thanks to Donna and Bob McKenzie for what they're doing, providing some shelter in the cold and in the wet conditions. I talked to Bob two months ago, and he said they receive no money from the city of Livermore, the county of Alameda, or the federal government. We really need to do more on this issue, and I could tell you the stories of the homeless one at a time. I mean, right now, I know this one woman, she has grand mal epilepsy, she's asleep in her car right now. She's been living in that car for three years, and she's been assisted by another homeless man. He's been homeless in this community pretty much the last 16 years. It doesn't make much sense. So, what are we going to do as far as solutions? I think one thing, we need to understand housing versus shelter. Housing is very expensive, but we're looking at alternatives. I think it's Assembly Bill, State Assembly Bill 2176, where it lifts some of the building codes. The city of San Jose is working on this, where something, people just want shelter. They, you know, the, we had one meeting with the nonprofit Everyone Home, and thank goodness for what Everyone Home is doing, but I disagreed with one of the women, one woman from that organization, and she shook my hand in peace, saying, "I've been working on homelessness for 20 years." And I, I held my peace there, and I wanted to say, "But you don't understand square one. If you want to understand square one, go out there and sleep when it's in the twenties, and see what that's like. You're not going to do much sleeping." So, shelter, I mean, it doesn't have to be unbelievably expensive. And I know you're under mandates, like Housing First, from the federal government, and you have to meet certain mandates, but it's not working, especially when you house somebody and they burn their shelter down. That was a little expensive. Okay, so, I think we need to solve this problem because on the fact that it gives us community resilience. Without community resilience, we're, we're just susceptible to, and vulnerable to multiple problems, and to avoid this problem, it just leads to community erosion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Carl Wintey, John Stein, Brett Wayne. Mr. Wintey.
Mr. Mayor, council, staff, again, I'd like to thank you all for what you do, service to Livermore, all of the staff, just, you know, the profound thanks. And I've gotten to know just how, you know, the city works that much more, and, and really learning. Mark, Jason, Christine, Doug, Paul, Steve, Ruben, Tamara, Mike, everything that you do, everyone that's in uniform that has a badge, I salute you for what you do. I got pulled into this, not pulled in with the steering committee. Sat on the steering committee, and we agreed to, you know, go for outreach, avoid impropriety, avoid false information. Placeworks gave us a lot of stuff. We went through traffic studies, hotel retail, conference, public finance, housing types, open spaces, what other cities did. And then we came up with some concepts, right, designed for outreach. We're not designing plans. I had to actually step away, because I felt like we got pigeon-toed into designing plans. Saying, "No, it's just about concepts and outreach." Came up with some plans, had the outreach. Again, Placeworks brings a lot of stuff, a lot of intel that's coming through, trying to get feedback. And of course, we got the injection of the plan from the community group and bringing it in, so we had the four plans that went forward. So, before I go any further, I want to stop and say, I want to thank the organization formerly known as Friends of Livermore. Bill Dunlop, Jeff Katske, Gene King, Joan, Lynn, Sepala, Lee Yonkers, you guys have done amazing things to make this a better place, and I salute that, and I thank you, and I 100% mean it. Jeff Katske, I reached out to you the other day, and we got together, and I spent two hours with Jeff Katske at Hagman Park, talking about the heritage of Livermore, and how we could have museums and showcases and different pieces, trying to build bridges and coalitions. Then from those concepts, you guys had to put a lot of work into getting this done and developed. There is a plethora of information that we should all study and be aware of. Meanwhile, the Friends of Livermore, the organization formerly known as Friends of Livermore, is spending $222,000 with checks, just two checks, JK, LS, they got $100,000 there. You say you shut it down, but you don't, because we go through. We know it's under investigation right now with the fair practice. Here's a note from city clerk, saying, "Here's all, everything that was wrong with the filings." Here is their, then disseminating information that, you know, they have a point of view. That's all good, you got a point of view about Livermore. Then Placeworks comes back, and this is like the oft-quoted document, right? 2,000 people came in, outreach, it was well-skewed toward the older population, good, right? You guys care about Livermore. It was well-skewed towards whites, hey? It was well-skewed towards moderate, or to moderate above-income of the people, for the people, by the people. It was, you know, we have the parking design, open space, traffic circulation, everything going through. I'm running on time, and I've got stuff to say. But overall, you know, there was a strong, you know, a strong majority, people come together. 75 out of 76 groups said they wanted housing. Public finance was way down there, but we think that's way more important. Then we got the plans together, and then the Stockman show up. I wish the Stockman showed up earlier, right? We could have had this, because they brought something awesome in for this Stockman's Park that everybody agrees with. And then we come back, and more stuff coming through, right? And there's a lot of work that's done on all of these plans. And meanwhile, we're still sort of, you know, having this dissemination and people that aren't on board, right? This two-to-one, like the vast majority? No. More people on my generation said the hotel should be on the other side. I don't care which side. Like, let's come together, we're Livermore. I would like to throw this in, but if I give this to these, they have to scan this in and make it part of the package. Everything right here is public domain. I encourage us to study that which is in public domain, so we know and we are educated about this process. Sorry. Right now, I got to go back to the winery, and we have people from Australia, Canada, Idaho, Michigan, Kentucky, Colorado, North Dakota, Florida, Illinois, California, and New Jersey. They're staying at the Rose Hotel in the Doubletree, because they can't stay in Livermore. Thanks, y'all.
Whole bunch of information. Thank you, Mr. Wintey. You could be an auctioneer in another life, talk real fast. Okay, John Stein, Brett Wayne, thank you for your comments. John Stein, Brett Wayne, and Steve Hathcock.
John Stein, John Stein, 1334 Cathy Court. There's a man who should be a politician. At the last meeting, I was discussing the Plan Bay Area by ABAG and MTC, which basically was designed by the central cities to provide worker housing in the satellite suburban communities, whereas the jobs, the shopping, the cultural venues would be in the Central Bay. And they had some very optimistic goals as to how to do that. Goal five, decrease the share of lower-income resident household income consumed by transportation and housing by 10%. A lot of people in the Bay Area, middle and lower income, are spending well over 50% of their income on housing alone. To live in, on the peninsula, in a middle-class style of living, it's estimated to have, you have to have an income of about $300,000, and it's still going up. So, that one has not been met. Another one was increase by 20% the share of jobs accessible within 30 minutes by automobile or within 45 minutes by transit. Last Thursday, I went down to San Jose in the morning, it took me about 35, 40 minutes. I left to come back to Livermore at 2:45. It took me almost two hours. I don't think they're meeting that, that goal very well. Traffic is getting worse, not better. Travel on BART is actually going down now, rather than up. It was on an upswing when the price of gas went up. Price of gas is going up again, so that makes transportation a little bit less affordable. And it seems like everything that can be done to raise money for transit projects is being done. The registration fee is going up. There's an increase in gasoline taxes. Bridge tolls will go up. There are now toll roads rather than just high occupancy vehicle lanes. And all of that doesn't help make things more affordable either. Another goal was reduce vehicle operating and maintenance costs due to pavement condition by 100%. In other words, we want all of the roads to be perfectly paved. Last January, I hit a pothole on 101 and had to replace a tire and two bent wheels, as well as a front end alignment. So I'm not sure, you know, where we're getting on that. But it seems like we may not be holding our own. The city's talking about triage on some roads as well. And one of the final ones is keep transit delayed due to ridership, due to aging infrastructure by 100%. In other words, a perfectly responsible, responsive transit system. We don't have that yet quite either. It looks like, this is a 40-year plan, and basically, we're almost halfway through. But maybe this is just a temporary glitch in the process. And in another 10 or 15 years, we will achieve this. But don't hold your breath.
Thank you, Mr. Stein. Brett Wayne, Steve Hathcox, Van Rini.
Good evening.
Yes, we haven't seen you in a while.
It has been a long time since I've been here. Goodness gracious. Brett Wayne, I'm a Livermore resident. You've got my address on the, on the blue card. Two weeks ago, I attended the Airport Commission meeting regarding the Isabel Neighborhood Extension for the BART plan. And at the time, the Airport Commission was unanimous in their negative declaration of the plan. Nevertheless, I have no expectation that this plan is going to not continue forward. And as I was leaving it, I was thinking that, you know, there may be an opportunity here for the City of Livermore to show some leadership with respect to protecting the Livermore Airport in that if you're going to go ahead and add 4,000 new residents, you know, 1,000 feet off the runway center line and directly underneath the base approach path for 25R, that maybe, instead of just meeting the city, the state, and the federal standards with respect to the sequoia and noise, that the city look at the APA and establish a mechanism where any new residential housing that goes in there has to have the highest level of noise mitigation associated with it. I was thinking there was an opportunity until last night. I went out there and, being the scientist that I am, went out and measured the noise levels at the locations that are being proposed for housing. In the Shea Homes outside right now, its ambient noise level is between 65 and 68 dB. On the Livermore BART parking lot, that park and ride share, it was over 72 dB. And the most troubling of it was the fact that I went over to the GM Farms in the, in the airway Boulevard area over across on the street, right out by GM Farms. It was over 80 dB. And that number is significant because if I was opening a business and trying to operate and had employees in that location, I would be required under OSHA to provide noise mitigation to my employees. I would have to have an annual plan for auditory testing for hearing loss. And I think, so I think it is a terrible situation to consider putting thousands of new residents directly at that location. And what I would suggest to the City of Livermore is that if you're going to put in housing over there, consider a swap where you could put the businesses and the light industrial and those sorts of activities on the south side of 580 and trading it with the residents on the north side of 580. So you can at least get some degree of noise mitigation for those new residents because it's not just an issue of providing housing for the City of Livermore. You have a responsibility to not just protect the current Livermore residents, but also to have a voice for those future Livermore residents who are going to be assaulted by the noise levels that are being produced out there by the traffic from 580. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wayne. Steve Hathcox, Van Rini, Nancy Bankhead.
Good evening. So my name's Steve Hathcox. And on Tuesday night, a week ago tomorrow, I was involved in a traffic accident on the corner of Greenville Road and Patterson Pass Road. This was a pretty bad accident. And through talking, some of, through some of the police department, the fire department, and different people, they say that there is a plan to put a stoplight in there. I guess the plan's been in the works for a while. I'm kind of questioning when this is going to happen. This was a pretty drastic accident. When the fire department pulled up and I was standing outside, I had to kick my way out of the windshield. I was upside down. And the fire department was pretty surprised that nobody died in this accident. This, me and my family were in this car. This is not good. They say there are several accidents there every week. Here's a picture of my car. This is what it looked like when they pulled it up on the wheels. This is what it looked like when my family was trapped in the car and I had to kick my way out the windshield. This is a picture of the other guy's car that ran the stop sign on Patterson Pass and T-boned me as I'm going down Greenville Road. Are people just waiting for somebody to die? This is, this is bad. Especially since it's known that there's several accidents every week and they're getting worse. I'm just looking to see when this is going to happen. It doesn't do any good to talk about it. Somebody's going to die. I don't want it to be me. I don't want it to be anybody I know. I don't want it to be anybody you guys know. This, this has to get fixed. If you go there and you stand there for two hours, between four and six, you will see the law be broken so many times. People pull up, make U-turns just to cut across. They don't wait. They blow the stop sign. They try to go two cars at a time. Somebody is going to die. Are you guys willing to accept that? Where, where is this? Is it in planning? Does anybody know?
We'll wait until you finish your comments. I don't want to.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm, I'm a little ahead of schedule, so.
Okay, I'm very good.
Yeah, so I'm just curious where this is.
Okay. And we'll find out. In fact, Paul Spence, if you get the contact information from Paul, or Sheri Sheets, do you want to make a comment?
That project is in our two-year capital improvement program. It is under design. It requires some coordination with the county for right-of-way take. And we expect to have it constructed within this two-year budget.
Two years starting now or two years started a year ago?
Two years started about six months ago.
Well, somebody's going to die before then.
Certainly hope that that's not the case.
I, I do too, but I was there. So, thank you.
Thank you for bringing this to our attention, Mr. Hathcox. Van Rini, Nancy Bankhead, Jeff Katske.
Van Rini, 816 Lucerne Street, Mayor, City Council members. I have a simple request of you. At least, I think it's simple. And it's to promote closer relationships between elected officials, primarily city council members in this town, and with the members of the community. And that relationship would be based upon district elections as opposed to citywide elections for city council members. I think this is a trend that is becoming more and more prevalent in California. City of Gilroy, the Dublin School Board have all moved towards the district-based elections. And sometimes, you know, prompted by the will for good government, sometimes prompted by lawsuits. But if you think this might serve the community better, I would encourage you to move towards district elections for elected officials. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rini. Nancy Bankhead, Jeff Katske, Kristi Miller.
Hello. And I had a visit from the BART board people. It wasn't the BART board. It was from BART at my house about their building their service and maintenance yard on North Livermore. They did a sound check on North Livermore. It's somewhere around 53. And their loudest thing will be 60. And that'll only be once an hour. That's 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Yeah, if I'm lucky, they may take Christmas off. They're, they've got pictures of what it's going to look like and what it's going to look like at night. They say the sound isn't going to make any difference there. They're having a meeting tonight in Oakland. I figured it was more important to come here, let everybody know they're having a meeting at the Robert Livermore Center tomorrow. If you want BART to wreck our valley, let them go. But it is just amazing what they want to do out in the North Livermore Valley. And I really need the city to step up and say they don't want it. It's just for them to take 100 acres out there. And it isn't just BART coming to Livermore. It's the trains and where they should go. If they had put them out on Greenville like they promised us originally, bought the land, and now they don't want to put it out there, you know, I don't know what to say. It's just, why would they even consider putting it out in a pristine valley that hopefully someday will be a park? Be something that people can go out there and, and walk around. The brown eagle is there, the golden eagle is there, the kites are out there, the tiger saddle manders are out there, the red-legged frogs are out there, and the coyotes and a few other critters are out there. But something has got to be done that BART just can't bully us. They promised us stuff for years. And what have we received? Not much for our tax dollars. I guess we maintained the BART really well. But I'm just very upset that they think they can go out to the Livermore Valley and only produce a little more sound than we've got. The sound we have is an average. They're talking 24 hours, seven days a week. That's the part I can't understand. Those trains have to be maintained and why on our land? Not in my neighborhood, is that what I should say? I don't know. But help, thank you.
Thank you. Jeff Katske and Kristi Miller.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Last meeting, you had a speaker up here who told you that the Independent staged a protest and a photo op. They said that the Independent created and funded this event and then reported on it for you. I've spoken with the originator of the event and I've spoken with the publisher of the Independent. You were deceived. And I, I think you, some of you may know that by now. But I just thought it was interesting that after that, that same person then moralized to you about ethics. So I'd just like you to keep that in mind. What I actually came up here to talk to you about, though, was that speaker and others came up and excoriated a number of us. Said, "Those who oppose what the city is doing," one accused us of having a vested interest. And I want to say that actually, I don't oppose what the city is doing. I think the city, this process, and we're talking about the downtown. The downtown process is, I think, an amazing process. It has been an open process. It's been a process, certainly, I've been involved in. I know that each of you have cared deeply about it and we've been very involved. It's a process where we like a lot of the things that are going on. The Stockman's Plan came in late. We certainly wished that it had been made public earlier, but it certainly is a positive addition to the plan. The Science Center, the Black Box Theater, good things. Southwest Parking, all of that, great ideas. I think it is not a bad idea, though, for those of us to come up and continue to challenge the city to make this the best plan that they can. One of the speakers was discouraged that the local paper critiqued the things that the city was doing. Horrible to think that the press would critique what government is doing. I can't imagine where that might happen. But it did happen here. And their critique is that we think that there are some things that can be improved. And I hope you'll consider those in the good process that we're doing. I think that the DSP does allow us to have some housing up along the railroad tracks. I think we ought to look at that because I think that would help to get us some additional housing and have housing not dominate the downtown space. I think we can improve the parking access for the downtown. I think that there are many positive things that we can do with the open space to make it activated and inviting without having it completely activated by residential or partly activated by residential. So I look forward to having the city continue to do good things. I think the city does best when it listens carefully. And I hope that you will listen to the critiques as well as the people who come in rah-rah and say that everything's great. I think that the best idea is not for those to say, "Hey, this is good enough. Let's build it as fast as we can." But what can we do that's the best for the city? Thank you very much. Oh, and I did have a great conversation with Carl, by the way. He's not nearly as crazy as you might think. And, and we had a wonderful discussion about Livermore Heritage. And we'll be talking more about that later. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Katske. And Kristi Miller.
Honorable Mayor and City Council, my name is Kristi Miller, and I'm the Project Manager for the Tri-Vale Anti-Poverty Collaborative. TVAPC is a collaborative of professionals from Livermore, Pleasanton, and Dublin who work together to improve health, education, food access, and housing. Our members represent specialists in nonprofit organizations, safety net services, government, businesses, foundations, and the faith-based community. We at TVAPC wish to recognize and commend the leadership and commitment of the City of Livermore to increase access to affordable housing and balance the needs of all community members. Not all East Bay cities have shown such concern for housing at citizens. We often forget that affordable housing means having a home that costs no more than 30% of a household's annual income. In the Bay Area, more than 43% of all households are currently overpaying for housing, greatly impacting our middle and low-income residents. Our goals concern a large range of those needing houses they can afford, not just very low-income residents. The faces of affordable housing include members of our own families, our children who are starting out in the workforce, our elderly parents with health needs and meager savings, and even ourselves because salaries haven't kept up with the inflation of housing prices and rising rents. It includes those of us who have committed our lives to serving the public, our teachers, our first responders, and often, our government and nonprofit employees, veterans, and those of us who have a disability. All of these faces represent a rich community like Livermore in which people are valued irrespective of their incomes. Without affordable housing, it is difficult for local businesses to attract and retain employees, commuter traffic, and the associated pollution increase and their severe impact on families when one or both parents spend excessive amounts of time on the road. TVAPC encourages Livermore and other Tri-Vale cities to meet and exceed the affordable housing requirements outlined in the Housing Element Plan to promote sustainable communities. The city has completed its second year of implementing the 2015 to 2022 Housing Element Plan. Under the regional needs allocation, there's a goal to provide 2,729 affordable housing units in Livermore by 2022. Most of the units built to date are above moderate and moderate income categories. TVAPC recognizes the challenges of building across categories, but encourages the city to pursue its commitment to this goal. We delight in the diversity of the citizens in the Tri-Vale and want to make certain that as many as possible can find housing in the city or near where they work. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. And thank you for your work in the collaborative. Okay, that's all the citizens forum that I have. We're going to move on to the consent calendar. Does anyone wish to pull an item for, for discussion? Congressman Carley?
Yes, I'd like to pull 4.03.
Anyone else? Okay, well, it's, okay, that's 4.03. Since, I have no comment cards, so let's just cover that one. Then we can get to the mission and we'll take all the consent calendar on.
Okay, thank you. So I've had some discussion with folks in the community and they've expressed some concern about, continued to express some concern about exiting and entering the existing parking garage. And I was wondering if Ms. Sheets could enlighten us on some of the improvements that are in the offing for that so that the public is aware of what, what the plans are.
Certainly. As a part of the I Street surface parking lot that will be placed just to the west of the existing garage, we intend to modify the circulation of the existing garage such that people can enter the garage from either direction. But exiting will be to, the westbound will be from the new I Street exit of the surface lot. So in other words, the conflict between the pedestrians... So in other words, the conflict between the pedestrians, as you exit the garage now for the right-hand turn, will no longer exist. So that is a part of the project and we look forward to that helping. We also will be modifying exactly where that crosswalk is, which will also help. So that's the plan.
Yeah, so that helps and really helps me understand. And I hope that the folks that are concerned in that regard know and understand that we're addressing that issue now. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Werner?
I've got a question on page 140 for the Livermore Village Infrastructure, the CIP 583-018, on the section that speaks about the east-west street. And the question is, do we need to adjust those funding dates?
Yes, we've done a little more study on the phasing of the work and we would propose that we move up the construction funding from fiscal year 2021 to fiscal year 1920.
2019? Or 19, okay, 19. When you said 1920, I think we're going way back. But no, so fiscal year is 19, 2019, 2020?
Actually, yeah, from, I'm sorry. And I just said from 19, actually from 1920 to 1819. So it'll be next year that we will start the construction.
2018, 2019?
Yes, thank you. We'll get the right year.
It'd be cheaper.
Yeah, if we get those dollars, yeah.
It wouldn't have to be paved, I guess, back then. So I would like to modify 4.03 and amend it so that we change those funding dates accordingly.
Okay, we have that?
If, the council is...
Oh, do you want that as a motion?
Yeah.
I'm making that as a motion, so I need a second.
Okay, motions been made? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, seconded by Councilmember Coumber. Any discussion on that motion? Would you care to make a motion for, well, let's keep it simple. All in favor of 4.03 with the amending motion? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Do I have a motion for the rest of the consent calendar?
I'll move the rest of the consent calendar.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Warner, seconded by Councilmember Carling, for the rest of the balance of the consent calendar. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Great, thank you very much. All right, we have no public hearings on to the main event. Matters for consideration, discussion and direction regarding execution of a development and disposition term sheet with Presidio Companies for the development of a downtown hotel. Mr. Stewart, our planning manager.
Good evening, Mayor. Thank you, and members of the council. So following up on the council's direction for the downtown hotel, city staff and Presidio have been negotiating the terms and timing for the development of a downtown hotel. Presidio and staff have reached an understanding of the general terms and conditions this evening. And this evening, staff's recommending the city council authorize the city manager to execute a term sheet. That is detached to your staff report. The term sheet will provide a framework for the disposition and development agreement and also provides a level of certainty that will enable Presidio to move forward with developing civil engineering and design-level architectural drawings for the hotel. The term sheet describes the construction of 125 to 135-room boutique hotel with 100 underground parking spaces and from 1,500 to 2,000 square feet of meeting space. The term sheet also indicates a hotel brand that would meet or exceed the standards for an upscale hotel, which includes brands such as Marriott and Hilton with hotel types such as a Marriott AC, a Marriott Autograph Collection, a Hyatt Centric or Hilton Canopy, for example. The expectation again is that the hotel would be high-quality and unique to Livermore and also the city's downtown context. The property would be purchased by Presidio at a fair market value that's based on an appraisal. Parking along with some of the development impact fees and infrastructure costs would be paid for through a community facilities district bond issuance. That Presidio would pay back over time. The parking garage would be publicly accessible. It would also be operated and maintained by Presidio Companies. The term sheet also identifies Presidio's obligation to participate with some of the other landowners on the Livermore Valley Center, including the First Street Mixed-Use Commercial, the Livermore Cinema, and the Bankhead Theater for developing and operating a solid waste facility. And that would replace the one currently in operation sort of behind Coscrute and the Madden Buildings. So again, the, the term sheet will serve as the framework for negotiating a development and disposition agreement. And that, DDA for short, would be subject to city council review and approval. Staff anticipates presenting that disposition and development agreement along with the project entitlements for the design and site plan to the council for review before the end of this year. And with that, council, our staff is recommending council adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute that term sheet. We're also recommending that the city council adopt a resolution finding the hotel project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act as an infill development project. And that concludes the staff report. We're happy to answer questions.
Questions for staff at this point? Okay. Very good, thank you. I do have some speaker cards.
I'm in my grandma clothes. I took the day off today to play with a grandchild.
As long as you're comfortable.
Blood pressure is way down, so let's keep it that way. This is Rochelle Snedeker, I'm Executive Director for Livermore Downtown. And I know someone said, some of us get up here and rah-rah. Well, I can't help but rah-rah a little bit, okay? As we move forward, this last week, we just, I attended the California Main Street Conference. It was hosted in Pleasanton this year, which was a blast having it so close. So we got to highlight Livermore a lot as well. Four years ago, it was hosted in Livermore. And our guests from all over the state of California who have amazing downtown stayed by the freeway. And we had to bus them over. And I got to tell them about the downtown-specific plan and that in, you know, a few years, there will be a hotel downtown and all the amenities and everything that was going to be coming. This year, didn't get to tell them we've done it yet, but I did take copies of the latest, you know, where we're headed, what our plan on paper is. And it was so phenomenal to be able to talk to people who work in downtowns, that have hotels, that have performing arts theaters, and talking to some who had performing arts theaters that struggled to not have all the amenities around them that they wished. So they were so jealous to think of having a hotel next to their theater. And then I talked to Monterey, downtown Monterey, with all of their amenities and all of their tourism attributes that we hope to be able to achieve. And he said, you know, I thought you, I told you what to tell them four years ago, your council. And I said, well, I told them, but we ignored you. Because his thing was, don't do it. We don't need the competition in Monterey. So you were getting checkpoints of, good job, atta boy, this is great, wish we'd have done this, oh, that's brilliant. Because you looked at everything. Everything that downtown struggled to promote and produce and to adhere to, to know best practices. You brought it all together. I, I was so proud of all of you, all of us as a community, because you did hear everybody. There's a, you know, I, I used to have conversations with my kids when they were teenagers and they would have something they really felt that I should let them do or that I should do. And I would have to say, I'd listen to them and I'd say, well, no, we can't because. I was constantly told, you didn't listen to me. And I had to say, actually, I did. You said this, this, and this. But that can't work the right way that we need it to work. And I think you've done that. Could other ways worked? We asked you to do, didn't care east or west, just do what's best. I think you've nailed best. And I think you're going to be proud of that. I think we're going to be seeing everything benefit from each decision you made because you'd made sure the dominoes all connect and nothing's going to be left out. So as a downtown executive director who's coming at you with an opinion based on experience and outreach to others with experience, I tell you, yea and rah-rah.
So Rochelle, you're telling me it was four years ago that I talked on the bus to those people?
Yeah, and you didn't build a hotel yet.
Well, and so is this weekend the Livermore Marathon?
Yeah, the half marathon. And see, they would be staying there too. So can I tell them this time that they come back for the next year's race and they'll have a hotel downtown?
We're working on it. Okay, so, so that's this weekend, the Livermore Half Marathon in the downtown?
Yeah, so we'll have about 4,000 people ready to run. And it's not going to rain on Sunday. I always say God loves Livermore because Sunday, he's letting a day of rest for rain and then he's bringing it back. So, yeah, so, you know, again, that hotel is going to have so much active use and just benefits all around it. So thank you.
Great, thank you. David Kent, Evan Branning, Alan Burnham.
Hi, David Kent. I, I agree with Rochelle. I am very excited the city is, is talking about the hotel and more than just talking, we're now making progress after more than 20 years. Because this element is going, this element of the downtown plan is going to be one of the most critical elements at really making this, this city a wine country destination, which is something that we absolutely need, need if we're going to preserve our vineyards and our open space that surround this town. The economic prosperity of the wine growers and the wine tourism industry is really the key to keeping our open space. And our open space is what makes this community so unique and such a desirable place. And I'm very happy that you're going forward with Presidio. I've met a couple of times with Rakesh. I think he understands the, the keys that we're looking for, the, the need to build for the future, to respect the, the heritage of Livermore and what we're all about. And I think there's a lot of work that's going to be, need to be done on how we integrate this hotel with the expansion of Blacksmith Square, with the introduction of Stockman's Park, with the way we integrate the science and arts facilities, the new cultural assets. And so I think these, these are the elements that are going to truly make a great downtown. Years from now, no one's going to care which side of Railroad Avenue we build the city's third parking garage on. It really, parking is important, but we have to envision a future where cars hopefully are less, you know, important and where it's more important that people can live and work locally. They can walk to transit, they can walk to where they, they shop and where they, they entertain themselves and a city that's really inclusive for everyone. And these, I, I think Presidio's the right company. They didn't ask me to say this, I'm just, I'm sure Rakesh will be surprised I'm saying it. But I, I think he really gets us and he gets what we're trying to do here in Livermore and the importance of, of doing this hotel right and making sure it's successful and that it really integrates well with everything else that's going into the downtown plan. So again, I, I congratulate you for taking up, I think, the important work, which goes well beyond parking and is really talking about the things that are going to make Livermore stand out in the Bay Area. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kent. Evan Branning, Alan Burnham, Jean King. Mr. Branning.
Good evening, Council, Mayor, and staff. I'm here speaking on behalf of myself and my name is Evan Branning. I'm here tonight to just thank you again for the hard work that you've done getting us to this point. I know that tonight's agenda item is about entering in with negotiations with the Presidio Group. And I do think that this is a group that has had their ear to the citizens. They've listened to Livermore. They've seen groups come along. We have heard from the wine growers, we have heard from the downtown, we have heard from business, we have heard from tourism, we've heard from everyone who enjoys, lives in, and appreciates how beautiful our town is. Presidio has been there through the entire process and I do believe you should go forward with negotiating with them to try to get the hotel built as quickly as possible. It is time that we start moving on to the other issues. We had an open forum today. We had speakers from TVAPC. We've had homeless advocates, we've had housing advocates, we've had transportation. Many of the issues that are facing our city have come up in open forum. It would be much nicer to see them as actual items on the agenda where we could have a more robust discussion on how we're going to address them. And I think that moving forward with Presidio will give us the opportunity both to have the most knowledgeable, the most dedicated, the most involved developer possible to help us with getting the hotel built, to getting the downtown to be as beautiful as it can be, and giving us the time and energy to start working on the other issues that Livermore is currently facing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Branning. Alan Burnham, Jean King, Craig Bueno.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I sent you a lengthy letter yesterday. I'm going to give you a Cliff's Notes version this evening. I've never had a strong opinion about where to put the hotel, although I had a slight preference for the west side recently. I don't object to your choice of an east side sooner rather than later as requested by Presidio. Of course, I'm sure you realize that given both visibility and timing affect land value. And so I would expect that city will obtain a higher market value for an east side location. And I think it would be helpful for the city to assure the, the public that it will be so. Some people have asked for more parking next to the Bankhead. It's not important to me personally because I'd rather walk a few blocks rather than deal with the downtown traffic around Livermore and Railroad. And I don't really know if the extra, how essential that extra parking would be, but I suggest it would be helpful for both public awareness and possible consideration for the Presidio discussions for staff to estimate an approximate cost for a second underground level. I park in a six-story underground garage at Stanford. The reason this might be important tonight is should the term sheet be modified to not preclude such a possibility. The additional cost could be mitigated perhaps by reducing new parking in other locations, particularly the southwest garage. But I don't have enough information to be able to make a reliable estimate. For example, would a second level below also be 55K per spot as, as was estimated earlier? A brief staff report on this issue would help the public understand why the council has made, the decisions it has made and will make in the future concerning the configuration of downtown parking. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burnham. Jean King, Craig Bueno, Don Argula.
Okay, sorry it took me so long. Okay, I'm Jean King. And there has been some misunderstanding about what is in the best interest for the Bankhead Theater on the property adjacent west of the theater. Apparently, at least one council member has heard that LVPAC representatives are concerned about a garage next to the Bankhead. Actually, a restaurant on the street level next to the theater would be valuable for catering for events at the theater. In addition, parking is an important concern for theater patrons. The Bankhead Executive Committee passed a motion to urge the city to match or increase the number of parking slots currently available adjacent to the Bankhead in any development plan. The community group proposal includes a restaurant and wine bar on the street level of the proposed east side garage. Okay, that's the end of my comments. And Sally Dunlop could not be here tonight, so I'm going to read her statement. Bill and I attended the performance of the Livermore Amador Symphony on Saturday. Since we were worried about parking, we went early at about 5:30 PM and had dinner near the Bankhead Theater. However, there was no parking on First Street, Second Street, or Third Street. So they parked in the parking structure near the movie theater and the Bankhead. I was fortunate in that there were still about 20 parking spaces on the top level of the parking structure that were available. This was at 5:30. In talking to others who attended, it was clear that parking was the problem for almost everyone who attended. At 6:00 PM, it was hard to find a convenient parking place. By 7:30, the only parking was by L Street if you were lucky. There is currently a parking problem that is only going to get worse. The population of Livermore is growing, which means more people who deserve to take advantage of our wonderful downtown. Also, we attract an increasing number of people who would like to come to our downtown for its restaurants and activities. We need more parking. However, according to one councilman, the city's current plan replaces the existing 63 parking spaces with an east side hotel. The city states that the 100 spaces underground and the 24 spaces on the surface level are meant to serve the public. However, Dan Smith, parking consultant with Smith Engineering and Management, thinks otherwise. He states that virtually all the parking spaces will probably be used by the hotel and conference center guests virtually all of the time. 194 spaces are required to serve the hotel, conference center, retail, and restaurant. The proposed I Street Garage near the railroad tracks will be needed mainly for the hotel as well. In addition to the I Street Garage, the city is proposing a southwest garage north of the service center and on L Street. The city's plan moves... The city's plan moves parking from the center downtown entertainment area to the edges of the downtown development area. It will not meet the needs of the public. It is critical to build an east side garage next to the Bankhead. Please review your parking plan to accommodate these needs. And Sally took some pictures of all the walkers and wheelchairs that are brought into the Bankhead by the people that need handicap parking, and she asked me to give these, and I'll give these to the secretary.
Mrs. Seacott, please. Craig Bueno, Don Argula. Mr. Bueno? Oh, oh, sorry, I didn't catch that. Okay, he was here. Okay, Don Argula.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Don Argula, CEO and President of the Livermore Valley Chamber of Commerce. Again, I want to reaffirm the chamber supports staff recommendations to the council for the next steps outlined in this item to advance the process with Presidio Companies to deliver the long-awaited boutique hotel in the downtown district. Presidio Companies is a qualified hotel development firm that has successfully completed several hotel projects in California and beyond, and has experience working with internationally recognized hotel brands that include Marriott, Hyatt, and Hilton. I've had the opportunity to tour one of its recent completed luxury brand hotels, Los Alcalbis, located in St. Helena. It's a beautiful property in the wine region with valet and self-parking, indoor and outdoor event space, and a spa. Would love to have something like that in Livermore. While each of the properties developed by Presidio Companies is unique, Presidio brings quality and prestige to its projects. It is an excellent partner and is well-suited to deliver a hotel deserving of the Livermore Downtown District and the Livermore Valley Wine Region. This chamber very much appreciates Presidio's interest in and commitment to a downtown hotel. Passion, fun, and success is the motto on Presidio's website and a fitting caption for the experience and expectations for this hotel. The future hotel at the Livermore and Railroad Avenue gateway corridor to the downtown district, Civic Center campus, and Livermore Valley Wine Region will be a big, beautiful welcome for visitors and residents alike. Mayor Marchand and City Council members and staff, the Livermore Valley Chamber of Commerce continues its support in your efforts to advance this important project. And since I have a little bit of time left on the clock here, I just wanted to take a moment to flag the reference to future free parking at several locations designated in this report. While it is reasonable to expect the city to provide parking to replace what was intended as temporary and free on the gravel lot, we know that building parking lots and garages is very expensive, and I heard earlier tonight something like $55,000 per spot. That's an awful lot of Uber fares. And we could designate some drop-off points along our central points in the downtown for what it costs to build a lot of this stuff, but you're keeping your commitment, and we appreciate that. But, you know, who pays? There's nothing free. There are costs incurred. So we urge you to please carefully consider reasonable financial returns on the investment in this infrastructure. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Argula. And as you pointed out, free parking is very expensive. Okay, that's it for the cards that I have, so I'm going to close the public comment period, bring it back to the council. Comments from the council? Anybody?
Let me just start off real quickly. Coming into office a little over a year ago, and one of the first people I met with was Mr. Patel at Presidio. And I have to say that at the time, after what the previous council had gone through to get to the point where we're starting over essentially, I found Mr. Patel throughout this whole process has been above board, completely honest with us, addressed all of my concerns about things. I would be more than pleased to see him and Presidio take this, you know, really get moving on it here. You know, this is one where we're actually talking about starting to get real plans together. Really, is that hotel going to look like? What is it going to be like? And I am more than comfortable with Presidio doing this here and with, you know, authorizing the city manager to execute this agreement. So let's, yeah, I can't say more about it, so I'm very happy.
Commissioner Carley?
I would agree with Councilmember Coomer. I'm also very impressed with Mr. Patel and his company, and he's stuck with us for many, many months, and I think we should move forward.
Mr. Mayor?
Well, I've also had very good dealings with Mr. Patel, and I would third what I've heard so far. At this point, do we want to invite him up to say a few words?
Mr. Patel, would you like to make a few comments?
First of all, thank you for everyone for the kind words. I appreciate the consistent messaging that I've heard throughout the process from everybody I've spoken to. You know, one of the main things as developers, you take a lot of risk and time. Time is your enemy almost every step of the way. And I think my sort of willingness to come here and meet with everybody is indicative that I don't care about that anymore. I'm committed to the city. I'm committed to building this hotel. So I appreciate all the work that staff has put in. I've had a lot of good meetings and conversations with everybody at the city, and I look forward to finally getting started, so thank you.
So I've got one question. With respect to the negotiations and the particulars on the term sheet, do you have any thoughts?
Not specifically. You know, the process of building anything, small or large, requires a lot of problem solving, and I think that's the key to any successful project. So I think the term sheet so far really captures the financial elements of what we think would make a hotel successful. And I'm sure as we go along and negotiate the DDA, we'll have further conversations on certain issues. But at this point, I don't have any specific comments on the term sheet. I'm extremely excited that it's done. Other than that, no specific comments.
So assuming we go forward at this point, when might we see some first renderings?
I just had spoken to our architect this morning and got a proposal for entitlements package. We could start getting site plans and exterior renderings done starting in a month and really get some pen to paper from that point on, from the site plans to actual physical spaces. And 3D renderings will take some time, but at least to get a real good concept on paper, I would think four weeks or so.
Okay, my turn.
So now I've got a question for staff. Do you have a question? No, do you have one?
I don't have a question. I just have some comments. Thank you very much for your patience and your comments as well. Thank you.
So I wanted to follow up on Mr. Burnham's request for getting some kind of preliminary estimate what it would cost at a second level below the hotel. And is that a reasonably doable request to put a preliminary estimate? And do you have any initial thoughts?
We can certainly put some estimates together for you. It will be a very expensive process. We expect a second level would be substantially more expensive than an initial level. When you get down to about 15 feet in that area, you begin to get into groundwater issues, and so we would have to do quite a bit of extra work there. But we can give you a general order-of-magnitude estimate back to council on what a second level would cost.
So you could estimate that for the next council meeting?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, this has been going on a while. And when I was on the Livermore Cultural Arts Council, one of the things that we heard over and over again was that the community, and this is from all 30 arts groups, that everybody was agreed that they wanted something iconic. And then I asked them, okay, I want everybody to come back and define for me what iconic means. Because everything means something differently to everybody. Thankfully, Vice Mayor Warner has now taken my place on the Cultural Arts Council, so it frees me up a little bit. But that was something that I remember from the very beginning, was everybody wanted something iconic that was very important to this community. And one of the things that I really appreciate from Mr. Patel, first off, the patience, this has been quite a process, but his genuine passion and his enthusiasm and his openness to, he's met with every one of us on more than one occasion, to get our input, he's worked with the community to get the community's input, and he has a genuine desire to create something iconic, something emblematic, and something that represents Livermore. And this is the place to do it. I have never been in a city, I've never seen or heard anybody make a reference to an iconic parking lot. But what Mr. Rakesh proposes here is something that he is genuinely excited about, and that is to bring something iconic and emblematic of the city of Livermore on that space. And I think that this represents a great opportunity. We've heard over and over again, this is something that the community wants, the community needs, and this is where I believe it's going to succeed. I was impressed at Councilmember Coomer's comments a couple of weeks back, where he was concerned that you would have a hotel languishing in a dirt parking lot for several years before the development of the downtown actually caught up to it. So this puts it in the middle of where everything's happening, which is where people want to be when you're staying in a city. You want to be in the middle of that. And I think being next to the Bankhead Theater, which is where it was originally proposed back in 2004, and I think that when we were looking at the 2,000-seat Regional Theater, the Regional Theater is going to go on the west side of South Livermore, and the hotel was always going to go on the east side. We've had a tremendous community discussion about this. And what we heard from the community was, two years ago, they wanted something iconic. They also wanted to protect the town character. That was very important to them. They did not want to see Blacksmith Square get bulldozed, and that was one of the original proposals. They wanted to protect Blacksmith Square. They didn't want a large looming hotel. But as was pointed out, everybody recognized the importance of a presence on South Livermore Avenue. Whether east or west, that was something very important. But what was more important was the protection of the town character in Blacksmith Square. They didn't want something looming over Blacksmith Square. Well, you can't very well have a large presence on South Livermore Avenue on the west side if you're looming over Blacksmith Square. The community said they didn't want that. So the only way that you can do that, have that presence, be an iconic presence, and be on South Livermore Avenue, we absolutely listened to the public. And that's when you distill all the information, that's the site that was left. And it's the one that makes the most sense. It's the one that's been studied the most extensively. And I believe that this really is the best solution to create what we heard two years ago, an iconic presence, something emblematic of Livermore in Livermore's downtown. So with that, I will entertain a motion.
I'll move we accept the staff recommendations about authorizing the city manager to execute a term sheet and to certify the environmental document as not requiring CEQA analysis.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second, yes.
Seconded by Councilmember Coomer. Any discussion on the motion?
I'll just say I think this is an excellent step forward. We've got a lot more to do here on getting it finalized, but this is the right thing to do at this stage.
Excellent. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Thank you very much. And thank you for the public. I greatly appreciate you guys coming out tonight. Thank you. All right, moving on to matters initiated and the committee reports.
If I may, I have no matters to initiate. I'll lead off with that. And my usual second meeting of the month with the Left of Finance Administration isn't until tomorrow. Usually I get to report on it. It's last Monday. Moved to Tuesday, so I really have nothing else to report.
Very good. Well, thank you. Thank you for your involvement. Commissioner Carley?
Yes, on Valentine's Day, several of us participated in the Lawrence Livermore Board of Governors meeting. We were invited to have a few glasses of wine with some of the governors or some of the folks that sit on the Board of Governors for Lawrence Livermore National Lab. I was out at Garey. That was enjoyable. Yeah, yes. Turned out my wife had something to do that night, too, so. On February 20th, I think all of us participated in the Glazer-Baker Town Hall at East Avenue Middle School. There were probably about 50-ish residents there. That was a nice opportunity for the public to ask, to listen, to hear what Glazer and Baker both have on their legislative agendas this year, plus give the public a chance at asking a few questions. On the 23rd, again, several of us, Councilmember Coomer and the mayor and I, were at Lawrence Elementary School for the dedication and the renaming of, this is the former Portola School, which is now the Lawrence Labradors, as a matter of fact. Pretty cute T-shirts, sweatshirts that the kids had on. On Saturday, I was asked to sub for the mayor at a Chinese New Year celebration, which was held at the Amador Theater, Amador High School. It was a very nice evening celebrating the Year of the Dog with an evening of music and dance. It was very colorful and was very nicely attended. And several other electeds from the region were there. Catherine Baker, again, one of the council members from Pleasanton, the mayor of Danville, and so on. So it was a nice event. And today we had the groundbreaking, as mentioned earlier, for the new EOC and council chambers. So those are some of the activities I've been involved in since the last meeting. I do have one matters initiated, and that's, as you may, as some people know, that I spend a fair amount of time in Alameda because we have grandkids over there. And one of the things that's intrigued me are the number of bicycles that I see around town that are not docked, not docked, at bicycle stations. And the name of the company is Lime Bike, L-I-M-E, like the citrus. And I went on their website, and actually, they have a pretty clever, I think, business proposition in that you have an app on your phone from them, and you can walk up to a bike that you find on the sidewalk someplace and open the lock with the app on your phone. You can ride it someplace, get off, re-lock it, and just leave it there, expecting somebody else to pick it up from you. And I'd like for us to consider that, or at least look into it, and would ask the city manager and staff to look into that. Would it work for Livermore? I have no idea. I also saw Lime Bike when I was in Seattle last weekend. We also have grandkids there. So, and so Lime Bike is around. And I wouldn't necessarily say we have to have Lime Bike, but I like the business model. It doesn't require a lot of infrastructure from the city, as far as I can tell, in terms of bike stations. And so I would like for us to, if we have the opportunity, to look into that and report back to us. Other bicycles? Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
So in addition to the Baker-Glazer event and the groundbreaking, I'll mention that the groundbreaking was really great to honor John Shirley. I thought it was a wonderful ceremony. So I hope it was recorded, but I really enjoyed it. And it wasn't just being able to, you know, toss some dirt around. It was really, really great to honor him, so I thought. So I went to a lava meeting, and that was standard business. But we did extend the contract of the manager for that for three years. He's done a great job, so that was good. And I went to an LDI meeting, and it was a... job. So, that was, that was good. And I went to an LDI meeting, and it was a standard one. And I think there was a lot of, a lot of excitement about moving forward with the downtown. So, with respect to matters initiated, there was the request, I think it was Mr. Rena had mentioned it, with respect to districts. That was a serious item in my mind. I mean, Concord and Hayward are going through it. I've seen over the last, I think, six months in particular, a lot of articles talking about it, and the lawsuits that go back and forth. And it's my impression from the articles is that once that issue is raised, you, cities kind of don't have a lot of choice there. So, what I would request, so, but I don't, no way do I understand the details. So, my request is that the city council come back with a report at the next meeting as to what we're really looking at.
How about we have the staff come back with a report, rather than the council?
I meant...
You said have the council come back with a report.
Well, but I meant the legal.
Oh, okay. Yeah, have legal come up with a
That's what I meant.
Report for the council.
That's the, I don't know what, you're a city attorney.
Yeah. Okay, okay. So, you said council, you said council, not council.
Right.
Okay, I got it. Have me go in there for a minute. Okay.
Yeah, no, yeah, you can come back with a report. But I meant city attorney, whatever the right, I've only been up here a few years. One of these days, I'll get it right. But, Jason.
Got it. It sounds like you're making more work for us. And I thought, you know, this is why we...
So, are you okay with that?
If that's a pleasure of the council, I can return with some additional information concerning the California Voting Rights Act, as well as the Federal Voting Rights Act. Very good. Thank you.
Okay. And I have one other item, if I may, is, you know, we see various advertisements that are occurring. And what I've done is kind of analyzed what's being put forth there. And I think there are, I think it would be worth having a discussion of what's being said back and forth at the council. So, I'd like to get that document put on, I don't know, consent calendar, and we can pull it and discuss it if we'd like. But the idea is, I think it was raised earlier, there's a huge difference between listening and agreeing. And the document I've written with input from many people, I think is, no question, we've heard what is being asked. There's also very good reasons why some of what is being asked is not being agreed to. And I think we need to have the discussion at the council on some of these points and kind of clear the air, because currently, the way the conversation is going within the community is, I don't think, helpful. So, my request is that we, we have a matters consent calendar for the next time, where we put that document there.
And one of the things that I think has been troubling, well, for me, is it used to be in the, in the path of civil discourse, first off, it was civil, and you could disagree without being disagreeable. And I think some of that's been lost in this fairly recent dialogue. So, I think I'd like to have a chance to see that.
And I think, you know, we'll have staff have a chance to look at it. So, we can get into some substantive thoughts on this and discussion, rather than just put it out there.
Vice Mayor, clarification on the document that you wish to have placed on the agenda?
Pardon?
The clarification on the document that you actually wish to have placed on the agenda?
Yeah, I'll send it to you.
Ah, very good.
It sounds like it's already been written, which might actually make it easier for staff. Okay, all right, everybody got?
Yeah, I disagree, so.
Pardon me? You disagree?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. So, we're 3-1. Okay.
And the concept is, I mean, traditionally, items for discussion are placed under matters. Is there a particular place or a strong feeling about one way or the other where the item actually ultimately appears on the agenda?
I'll leave it to your advice. I mean, once I get the names right, you can get me right on where this thing goes.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? All right. Well, everybody else has been where I've been. So, lava meeting, I always get a kick out of the operations report. Everybody always looks forward to some of the off-the-ball bizarre questions that I ask.
What is it, the Langlier Index?
Langlier, the Langlier Index, which is, so the fun thing about that, you walked into it, the fun thing about that is it's used as a measure of corrosivity, but it actually doesn't measure that. It actually measures the potential to precipitate calcium carbonate, which then protects the pipe. But that's more than anybody else cares to know, other than me.
Maybe we could put that on matters for consideration next time.
Okay. On the 22nd, I was asked to participate in a panel discussion at a forum on homelessness and best practices. That was at the San Leandro Library on behalf of Alameda County. Very well-attended. It was standing room only, and a lot of good information and good exchange. We had several staff members there that do a great job with the resources that we have here. On the, later that same day, I went to the Alameda County Transportation Commission, and we talked about the student bus passes. We had a legislative update, a lot of the stuff that we had covered at the committee meeting that I'd spoken about previously at a previous meeting. Similarly, we were at Lawrence Elementary and suggested that, again, they are the Lawrence Labs, which I think is fabulous. But when I started in this business, the heaviest element was Laurentium, and it was 103. And now we have added, we're up to 118. And at the event, I suggested that perhaps someday, one of the graduates from Lawrence Livermore may continue Ernest Lawrence's work and continue to add to the body of human knowledge. So, very exciting. On the 24th, and by the way, thank you for covering that for me, I was at a blue and gold dinner, Arrow of Light ceremony, where 14 wee blows crossed over the bridge to Boy Scouts. That was very cool. And also, the groundbreaking was an amazing event. It was, it absolutely poured at 9 o'clock, coming down in buckets. And at 10 o'clock, Mayor Shirley arrived, and the sun came out, started to dry up. It was amazing. It was a great event. And so, thank you for everybody's efforts to make that happen. This is why I wanted to have it in September, but it didn't happen that way. So, but it really was, it was a remarkable event, and that we can recognize our statesman, war hero, planning commissioner, former mayor, and just a man who's spent decades committed in service to this community. And that building is something that we have needed for decades, and that emergency operations center and state-of-the-art meeting facility is going to be something that will last for generations. So, thank you very much. And we will be adjourning. We have given staff an incredible amount of stuff to do of late, and we decided that we'd let them get caught up on that, rather than have a meeting in the middle. So, we're going to allow staff to take March 12th off as the meeting. And the next meeting we will have will be Monday, March 26th, 7 o'clock. We'll see you here. Thank you.